Welcome everyone, staff. Glad to see you. Orange Borough Board of Commissioners Work Session, April 11th, 2023. At this time, we'll have item number two. Mr. Dave Peterson Senior, Consultant with Berry Dunn, going to talk about our Parks Master Plan. Did you bring money with you, or are you just going to talk about it?
I'm just going to talk about it.
Oh, okay. Bummer.
So yeah, we just wanted to give you a brief update. Dave Peterson from Berry Dunn flew in from Denver last night. We're here, me and Caitlin are here to visit your parks all week. So we have the best part of the job. We get to go out and visit. It was a perilous journey through St. Louis in a very small plane. Yeah, they changed planes on us too, because I think our bags were too heavy. So yeah, we kicked off the Parks and Rec Master Plan. We had the strategic kickoff meeting about four weeks ago probably. And we're here this week. I actually performed the inventory. Our project manager was in another, had another engagement, so she wasn't able to make it. But we see here that Teresa Jackson is our, is our project manager. She'll be leading the project. I'm happy to be here to represent Berry Dunn and the rest of our team. We also have a local, more local regional landscape architect in StanTech, and our RC associates will be doing the statistically valid survey as part of this project. Why do this? And really, the idea behind the Parks Master Plan is to, is to really address park and recreation needs and opportunities. We've already been out and visited about, I suppose, a dozen of your parks and just really enjoyed the city so far. It's been great. During our initial meeting, we really identified some keys to success that we really felt were, were important to this project. And really, that targeted community engagement is, is one of the key factors in finding out what the needs of your community is, what they want, what they need. Adaptability, responsiveness of this to, to community input. So being able to kind of roll with, with what they, what they want. Realistic and achievable goals. So not kind of setting you up for, for failure, but really, you know, what, what can we do? And then what do we have the means to do is really one of the goals. Ultimately, it's really a roadmap for the future. So where, where can you head in the next, in the next 10 years? And identifying these best practices that, that other agencies are, are doing and, and kind of help you kind of move forward in the future. Here's kind of how we plan to do that, looking at identifying service gaps, whether that's kind of your distribution of parks or your programming options. What, what type of programming do you have available at your rec centers and different, different facilities? And then me and Caitlin are really doing that, that those park visits and looking at kind of access to parks. Looking at evaluating operations and staffing needs, of course, developing prioritization for park acquisition development, where, where you might need parks as, as we look at kind of how parks are distributed. Are there any gaps in your system? And also, we kind of pride ourselves in, in the ability to identify those gaps and then help you in the prioritization. So whether that's total number of people in that possible gap area, lower income areas, diversity in those areas, really beginning to prioritize those, those areas. And so not that every area needs, needs improvement, but what, what would be those priorities as, as we move forward? So again, I don't need to read all these to you, but this is kind of what we've identified so far. Basically, this is the approach. We, we started with the initial project planning. We're kind of between one and two right now. Teresa will be coming in with the kind of information gathering team. They'll be doing public input that first week of May. You'll have opportunities to give your input directly to that team as stakeholders. That'll be, I think, May 4th, we have that, that targeted that, that they'll be in town. So sometime around that first, first week of May, we'll go back after we kind of gather all this information, begin to run the analysis, looking at programming, looking at distribution of parks across the city, working with GIS, kind of looking at that distribution. We'll be back, well, they'll, after project phase two, that community engagement, they will release a statistically valid survey that'll go out to the community. That'll happen in the May-June time period. We'll come back in July and present those findings of kind of all the level of service analysis, the statistically valid survey, and then be back in July for a visioning session. So after we've gathered all this information, what are we going to do with all that information? That'll be in the July timeframe. Then we'll move on into draft and final plan later in the year. Basically, a 12-month process. We're in that April, April early kind of third of the project right now. Questions that I may answer or take back to Teresa, to things that...
How are you going to do the survey? You said you're going to survey the public. Are those just primary stakeholders in the community, or is that going to be open to, you know, the average person who uses the...
So, typically, how the survey works is after we have this kind of initial gathering of stakeholders and public meetings, they'll go back and develop a customized survey that allows us to ask specific questions. And then they'll send out a statistically valid or random sampling to, typically, it's about 3,500 households, and then gather that information back. After the survey's been out a week or two, then they'll open it up to an open link survey, keep those results totally separate so that they can keep the statistically valid portion, but that also have an open link survey that allow anybody in the community to kind of answer those questions also. So, again, trying to keep those separate, or definitely keeping those separate, so it stays statistically valid, but giving everybody the opportunity to participate in the survey. That's typically a mailing list that the survey firm purchases of all residents.
Commissioner Smith, Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. Have you found any gaps so far?
We've only been here about, not even 12 hours yet, or not even 24 hours.
Oh, I thought you said you've already visited.
So, we've visited about 12 parks. So, beautiful parks, though. We've really enjoyed our visits so far, beautiful city. I can't tell you right now whether or not we've seen gaps, but we'll use GIS analysis. So, we'll look at kind of if people were going to walk 10 minutes, do they have access to a good park within a 10-minute walk? Do they have access within about a mile of their house? And then the programming analysis will be separate, but we will find them if they're there.
Thank you.
In your travels, do you, mostly you have two governments, the county government and city government, I guess, in a lot of your cities, right?
Yes.
Do you find many of them have combined parks departments for a unified distribution of all the talents?
Not typically. Typically, they're separated. Caitlin was just talking to, we were down in Palm Coast, Florida here about a month ago, and we're doing kind of combined project, but definitely two different governments even working down there. So, we see a little bit of everything, see a lot of park districts also, and so kind of that third governing body.
What about parks with mobility issues? Do you see much of that across the country?
We see a lot of ADA accessibility issues across the country. And it's typically kind of, one of the number-one recommendations that come out of our plans is to really address those ability for able-bodied or people that need those accessible walks to get to different amenities within your parks. And we've seen that already, just kind of the lack of park paths would be one thing that I would kind of bring up, especially in some of these smaller neighborhood parks. Definitely something we'll note, we're not doing an actual ADA audit, but things that will kind of red flag, if you will, and make recommendations.
That was my next question.
Yeah. That's really a totally separate kind of study that really dives in deep, but recognizing and bringing it to the forefront, I think, is the job of this plan.
Yeah, there was a gentleman in New Jersey who had a child with special needs and had no place for him to go, so he bought a piece of land and created the whole park just for children and adults, really, with special needs. And it made big news. I mean, it was, you know, had an astrotype turf everywhere, no stumble issues, very, very nicely done.
We're seeing a lot of that synthetic turf going into playgrounds. There's a big issue with, you know, typically, we still see a lot of playgrounds that are sand, if you will, or pea gravel, which definitely isn't accessible. But really moving kind of even beyond the engineered wood fiber to port-in-place surfacing, or now the synthetic turf is pretty popular.
Okay. Kunsia Castle wants to...
Yes, I was thinking, Mayor. I was curious, do you guys make recommendations like on flowering plants and bushes or leaving particular areas maybe dormant so that it can promote wildlife even within the city limits or, you know?
We were out to your nature park earlier today. Love the nature park. We've made some recommendations in some previous plans, especially as you go west and water is such a resource, that cities may consider reducing the amount of irrigated turf. And so, yes, those may come up in some of our recommendations. Again, a lot of it would come back to that survey, and is the public really kind of wanting to have more natural areas? Is that kind of one of those key things that's coming out of the survey? Or is it something that the, that our group would suggest? Because we're not seeing that available in Owensboro. So, it just kind of depends. Every project's different, so...
Do you ask questions like that on the survey, if they would?
Again, the survey, those public meetings ahead of the survey are really going to dictate what questions. And so, if they hear that in those public meetings, if they hear that kind of from council, commissioners, staff, if that really kind of boils to the top, then that may end up being a survey question. Again, they really try and customize the survey to each individual city that we're working in.
Okay. Thank you.
We have a great parks department, a great leader, and so, Amanda, you got the wish list out, ready to go?
Nah.
Nah.
She hasn't twisted her arm yet, so...
Well, if there's no other questions...
There will be a website, so first of May, they plan on releasing a website that'll kind of give the public kind of all this information, give them information on when those public meetings are coming up. They'll be able to put the survey links out on that when the open link comes out. All kinds of information will be on that, on that website. And I believe it's set to release first of May.
And then there's be some way for people that don't have the internet and don't operate, stuff like that, to get it, right? Get opportunity to participate as well. Great, thank you. Okay. All right, I guess you get on that little bit of the plane, fly back to Colorado.
No, we're going to go visit all the parks.
Oh, are you?
We still got parks to go visit, so...
Good deal.
We're going to head out and go see the rest of your parks. Enjoy your city, beautiful city.
We're glad to have you. Thanks for coming to Owensboro.
I've really enjoyed it so far, so, thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Safe Haven Baby Box. Chief James Howard, Owensboro Fire Department.
As you said, Chief James Howard, Owensboro Fire Department. Thank you for affording us this opportunity to provide a brief presentation today on something that is important to us, that we've been wanting to kind of get out a little bit more awareness, and we've been waiting for the right time to do that, and we think now is the time to do that. So, I'm here today to talk about the baby box project. As you can see, it's a safe alternative for the most vulnerable among us, which would be the infants in the first 30 days of life. So, we're going to talk about what the baby box is, why we're interested in participating in this project, how we're actually going to go about it, and when we can expect to see the next steps of the project itself. So, what is the baby box? As you can see, the visual, and you may have already seen these in some other communities, it is a physical box that's installed into the side of a building, and it basically works to be able to open. You can put an infant inside of the box, and then you close it. It's locked from the outside, and it's accessible from the other side. And it's only, it can only be installed in facilities that have 24/7 presence at those facilities, whether it's a fire station or a medical care facility. So, what it is, it's a safe place to legally and anonymously surrender a newborn. Clearly, this isn't something that you'd want to think is going to happen a lot in your community, but it is a safe last resort for a parent who's had to make an excruciating decision to try to provide the best opportunity for their child that they can in a very sensitive, delicate situation. So, the box, just like you see that's up there, this is from a specific company called the Safe Haven Baby Box Company, and there are 132 of these at the last count throughout the country. And there are 16 of them already in Kentucky, but that number's growing, and we're going to help to boost those numbers as well. So, why are we interested in doing this? By the way, that slide shows you what the inside wall looks like whenever the infant is placed into the box from the outside. Once again, it would lock at that point, not be accessible from the outside, but the responders would be able to clearly see it's transparent. You would know that the child is in there and needs the care. So, that's what it looks like from the inside. So, the interest grew within the department, actually going back to around 2020. So, not long after Chief Mitchell left, I had different folks come up to me. One of them was actually a firefighter had come to us from Kansas City, and he was familiar with like devices in that area. And then, it seemed like it was just like the zeitgeist, you started hearing more about it and started seeing these pop up in different places. So, I had multiple people within the department come to me, and I was like, yeah, that seems like a really good idea. Let's explore that. Maybe it's something that we could get into because it's aligned with our mission of preserving life. So, it does provide a safe solution for those in need, and that's what we're always looking for is safe solutions, whether it's prevention, response, mitigation. We know, one reason that we want it is simply because we know these boxes are used. It may be an unfortunate aspect of circumstances that people have, but it's something that has occurred throughout the, throughout human history, and unfortunately, this is something that becomes, can be a necessity for a person at that right moment. So, we know that 24 infants have been surrendered since the Safe Haven baby boxes started being put in place in 2017, and just eight of them last year. So, if you think these things have been around for five or six years, and a third of the infants that have been surrendered to these boxes took place just last year. And there are a lot of reasons for that when you look around for social conditions, the economy, and different things. But some of it's also that people are learning that those boxes are there, they have an awareness of them, and now this is a safe alternative to some of the other options that people might have chosen in the past that we know are not safe, that may result in harm to an infant or a delayed response by medical responders and so forth. Once again, kind of repeating that statistic, there are already 16 of them in Kentucky. One of the reasons why I do this, I want to get in the game. We know the other communities are putting these out there, they're making it available, and we know that it's just one more way that you could provide safety in the community. They put a box in just in December. They had a surrender, you could find the news story, February 9th, I believe. So, within two months, they had someone who once again had that situation where this last resort was the option that they chose to make sure that their child was safe and would be taken care of and be provided an opportunity to have a better life. So, how are we going to go about this? Well, I look back like the journey towards this moment for the past three years. We started out considering like, what are the legal issues? We don't want to just jump in, you know, we want to go into it with our eyes open and not just put a box on the side of the building and say, hey, you know, if you have the circumstance, just drop the baby, and we'll take it from there. There are actually legal issues that we had to look at, started to explore those with the previous city attorney, because it predates the current city attorney, and the conversations have continued from there. I wanted to gain the support of the city administration, the city manager could tell you, we've discussed this over the last two or three years as it's come up, once again with the previous city attorney, and then more recently, leading up to the developments that brought me here to talk to you about this today. We have to determine a location. Okay, we have five stations, we have training center. Where are we going to put this thing? Is the fire department even the appropriate place to put this? It has to be a 24/7 facility, trying to determine where is the best place we could put this, where the person who is going to have that need would be able to find it and be able to use it. And then to develop partnerships for fundraising awareness. We know that in 2021, Evansville Fire Department had worked with Right to Life on the other side of the river on raising funds to install two boxes over there. And I believe they may have installed additional boxes since then, but we know they installed those two with that partnership where the fundraising and the awareness were taken care of by an outside entity. And it's always great when we can nurture those partnerships, especially to the effect that it's going to provide that safety element to our community. So, beyond that, so we started with legal issues, and we run down. It's like, once we do this, we need to make sure that this is something that's being monitored constantly. It has to have a fail-safe and make sure that any infant that is placed in this situation, if they're providing them to us in our care, to make sure that we can get them to that next step so that they can find a home. That we need to make sure that the fail-safes are in place, we need to make sure that our folks, even though as a minimum, our folks have to be EMTs, we want specific trainings for the newborns in those environments to make sure that we're providing the care, making the proper notifications so that the child can move on to that next step, make sure they're in safe hands with us, as we believe they are. And then maintaining that program. We don't want to just, you know, ask for your attention, say, we're putting this box in, like, this thing's great, and then that's the end of it. It'll take continued training, continued awareness to make sure that the people who need this resource know where it is, and to make sure that we're ready to be on the other side of that wall to be able to take care of that child. So, when is this going to take place? We expect completion in the late spring of this year. The next steps that we expect, one that's already happened is the order was made by Right to Life Owensboro. If you follow them at all on their Facebook page, March 20, May, yeah, March 27th, I believe, they posted they had reached their fundraising total because Right to Life Owensboro is the fundraising entity for this. They partnered with us to raise the funds. So, basically, they raised the funds, and then they make the order to the Safe Haven Baby Box Company. Our box is under construction at this time with Safe Haven baby boxes. And like I said, Right to Life Owensboro reached their fundraising total, it is like a big check, $16,000. That goes to the Safe Haven Baby Box Company, where it takes, it's going to take four or five more weeks to get the box here, so we're expecting mid-May. And there are some facility aspects. We've already spoken with the folks at Public Works and Facilities Maintenance on ideally where we would do this, which we're looking at Station One, which is 512 West Ninth Street. We're looking at the Ninth Street side. Once again, this station is occupied in general 24/7, but we have fail-safes with the communication aspect tying into the, directly to our dispatch center. If someone's not in the station, we would still be notified. Some of the benefits of Station One, it's very visible, it's our flagship station, it's centrally located in a neighborhood, it's easy to access in town. The Ninth Street side, for those, for the anonymity, which is so important to this project for the person who makes this decision, it has to be out of the way of immediate security cameras and all of that. So, Station One is the ideal candidate for us facility-wise at this point. And then the training aspect is so important as far as Safe Haven as the resource. They've actually come in in the past and provided some training to our personnel at just as far as taking care of children, whatever. In the previous iterations of some of the Safe Haven ideas over the years where you would surrender a child in person to someone at a facility, they would talk about what you can and can't ask that person and all of those things. So, we want to make sure that that training is in place and that our folks understand what we're getting into and what our obligation is. So, that's kind of our timeline there. I provided links to the different organizations that are part of this partnership who are going to make this work. But anyway, those, I mean, I didn't go into a lot of detail really, but I am happy to provide that to you. I would like to make sure that I put out, on the one slide where you saw the box on the side of the building, it had a phone number for the Safe Haven hotline, which is 1-866-99-BABY-1, the number one. So, 1-866-99-BABY-1. And the thing is, people can call this number if they're in a situation, whether they're getting ready to have a child, or they've had a child in those first 30 days. It's not a hotline where you call and say, I'm going to go and surrender my baby to this particular box. It's where people can call to get assistance. They may be just as or more likely to be directed towards resources that they're going to need when they decide not to surrender their baby. So, it's really important to consider that. It's a hotline where either expectant mothers or family members can try to use that as a resource to get that information, and then to consider exactly what that experience is going to be like. And... going to be like and what they need to think about afterwards, whether they surrender that child or not, based on what their decision is. So that's it for my slides. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Any questions? Commissioner Glenn?
No, he had his hand up first.
So you get to choose who goes next?
Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, all right. So here's an awful question, and I'm sorry to ask this, but so somebody drops a baby off, but unfortunately, it's dead already. Maybe it's been abused. What do you do then? I mean, because the law is trying to protect this person who is in good faith, we hope, leaving a child who's healthy enough to be taken to the hospital and put with the foster family. But if that occurs where the child's actually dead by the time they're there, at that point, do the legal, maybe I'm looking at the lawyer here, at that point, does it become a criminal thing? And what would you, what would your firefighters do? Obviously, extricate the body, but what are your responsibilities after that?
Yeah, clearly we, that is a different, like, this is for someone to leave an unharmed infant.
Right. And we would hope they do that.
If there were signs of abuse or in the worst case, like a tragedy like that, that would be another thing, and that would be investigated, and I'm sure to the full extent of the law. Our role in that would be to make those notifications so that that investigation could begin taking place. We're not trying to facilitate someone doing that. I mean, it's quite the opposite. Could something like that happen? Unfortunately, yes, but I mean, somebody could also leave an infant anywhere else, and we've seen that. And those are investigated as well. But yeah, that is not the idea behind this box.
Yeah. I think somebody would be a pretty irresponsible parent if they got to that point and they were doing that. But it's still, I think it's a wonderful program, don't get me wrong. I think it's.
It bears on my mind because, like I said, this is for unharmed infants. This is supposed to be, like I said, that last resort to make sure this baby's safe. If we have a child who is dropped, as much as it's set up to be anonymous, who has, who's been, it's clear that they have some signs of being injured or, you know, harmed intentionally, then that becomes an investigation for law enforcement, clearly. And our role in it would be to make sure that we notify them and let them do what they need to do there at the station and then, and they would go from there. And our, like I said, our folks are medically trained. They would do what they, if the child's alive, clearly, they'd do what they can do to take care of the child in the first place and make sure he can get to medical care.
Okay, so just to follow up, so the funding comes all from Right to Life. They buy the box, basically.
They buy the box?
There's no cost to the city.
Yeah, which, and you could do fundraising for installation. Like, we have great folks over at Facilities Maintenance, Dr. Joe Welsh over there, he doesn't have any problem with the actual installation. Like, we have our own folks to do that. So, I mean, that saves some money. But yeah, the box itself, the city and what the mayor signed on to is a lease agreement with the Safe Haven Baby Box folks. We don't, like, you have to pay so much to have this box built, but in legal terms, it's actually a lease and service agreement that we enter into with them. And then, but that gives us an obligation. We have to take care of this thing and we need to make sure that we're doing the daily, weekly, quarterly checks on it to make sure that the monitoring's working and that, like I said, those fail safes are in place so that the notification takes place as it is designed to do.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commission, Tim Ross. Wanted to give an update to the group with some of the events that are coming up just over the next 90 days. Typically, when the weather warms up, obviously, there's lots of things going on in our community. We have been working quite a bit over the last probably year and a half even with the CVB and Dave and Mark and them with some new events that are coming into the community this year. And so I wanted to provide an update. There's, our office has got, I believe it's 40-plus events over the next 90 days that are coming up on, in city, on city property. But we just wanted to highlight a handful of those that are, I guess, some of the larger events are involved a little bit more of the community. The first one that most people are familiar with is Barbecue in Barrels, formerly the International Barbecue Festival. Most of you are aware that we've had a name change, kind of a refocus in partnership with the barbecue group and the CVB to add that bourbon element, now that Green River Distilling has got such a prominent presence in the bourbon market here in the Commonwealth. And so we wanted to be able to utilize that with a bourbon element to the event. And we thought, even when we talked to the bourbon folks, to combine that with our barbecue weekend was kind of a home run. So they wanted to see that happen. So now we've got Barbecue in Barrels, May 12 and 13. So a lot of people are still familiar with what they consider barbecue festival to be. The core of that event, obviously, is the church cooking teams, and those teams will still be right there, located around the courthouse. And we've made a pretty significant effort to reach out to other barbecue-focused food vendors and restaurants from around the region, really. And so we've got 15-plus barbecue vendors, food trucks, restaurants that'll be there along Second Street downtown, in addition to the church cooking teams. Then the backyard cooking competition there in front of the convention center area will continue like it has been with 30 to 40 teams and that typically competing on the Saturday. And then we'll sell live music. There'll still be a carnival, there'll still be, you know, some craft vendors are returning back. But again, the focus is strictly on vendors, whether it be food or craft vendors, that are barbecue or bourbon-related items. The barbecue group as a whole, several years ago before COVID, decided that they needed to refocus that on, get focused back on not being just a street fair with anybody being out there, but keep the focus on barbecue. And so that's why that focus still remains barbecue and bourbon-related items only for those vendors. And then the YMCA does a good fundraiser, the 5K run, they've always got 600 to 1,000 runners out there that morning. So that'll still take place like people are used to. But then the new element, the new component to it, the bourbon experience, so all of that will be inside the Owensboro Convention Center. It is a ticketed event, and so they've got 30, that says 30-plus, I think they're actually 35, they capped it. So 35 different distillers from around both Indiana as well as Kentucky. And so you see some of the names there, some of the big hitters in the industry, in addition to dozens of other distillers. So all those bourbon aficionados that are out there will have a great experience to kind of be exposed to some different bourbons that they might not be used to. And so there's still general admission tickets as the screen references, the VIP tickets are all sold out for that. And that involves, we tied in Old Hickory BBQ into that. So they're going to have some of their meats over there because the bourbon folks, again, said, what makes this unique compared to something different? And obviously, our barbecue here is just a little bit different than other places. And so we've got John being a part of that event, part of that VIP experience there and tying in some of the Old Hickory BBQ. So that's barbecue weekend coming up in just barely a month away from now. And then Friday After Five kicks off right away. It's always that next weekend. And so they've got their locations with multiple stages there at the convention center, then behind the Holiday Inn, and all their food vendors up and down the street. Obviously, it's a signature event for our community that takes place May 23rd all the way through the end of August. And opening night, May 23rd, is traditionally city night, and it'll be that again this year. So Stephen and his crew and Kevin got some of our big trucks with Public Works that'll be out there, and Chief's got some fire trucks, and PD's got their vehicles out there too to have on display, just to show all the different assets that we utilize in the community that the community likes to see that night. So we're excited to kind of help kick off Friday After Five again in just over a month. Yes, sir.
You know, the last two are, you know, they ended up being spread out all over the place. You kind of go back to where it was before in River Park. River Park to all the way down, I guess, the Holiday Inn, or is it going to be just still scattered out like it was last? I got a lot of emails and complaints about that. Because it's a hike from River Park Center to all the way down there.
Correct, yeah. River Park Center actually has, is not a part of Friday After Five.
Not a part of it, okay.
Yep. Friday After Five, last year, they're bored, again, independent of us. We support them and, because it's such a signature event, but they're an independent group, and they decided over a year ago to shift down to the opposite end of downtown. So they're not at River Park, they're not on this kind of east side, bridge side of veterans. All of the Friday After Five activities are essentially from Frederica Street towards the Holiday Inn. So all their food vendors are there between Frederica Street over towards Locust, behind the Hampton Inn. And then they've got the stage at the Holiday Inn, and then the stage there behind the convention center. So that's where all the activity is on the, we'll consider like kind of the west side of that downtown riverfront area.
Okay, just, is that's going to come up, that question's going to come up?
I'm sure it'll come up again, but Friday After Five, and I think we had a meeting that several months back, and Friday After Five liked the location of where they're at now, and they shared that they enjoy that new location and they're happy to be there again this year.
James is going to get all this down on the paper for the newspaper for, so.
Sure.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm on the board of Friday After Five and.
Well, good for you, thank you.
I have been for 26 years. I just wanted to maybe explain something. The reason why people thought that it was spread out last year, it wasn't that Friday After Five was spread out, it was that the River Park decided to do their own thing and there were people at the River Park and then there were people at Friday After Five. And some folks thought that that was all one thing, but it wasn't. So we are on the west end of.
The riverfront.
Of the riverfront now.
But nobody knew that at the beginning.
Right. Well, because, you know, when anything changes and, you know, anything that's new, people are all confused about what's what. So it was the first time, first year that that happened, and so people were just not sure of what was going on.
But we got that figured out now, right?
I think so.
Okay.
Just like Barbecue in Barrels, if we change it, people are still going to call it the old thing. But yeah, there was a shift, so yes, all Friday After Five's on the west side of the riverfront. And then we always kick off Live on the Banks, Saturday evening music series we do with two different stages there at Frederica Street and at the pavilion there on Allen Street. And that starts that same weekend as Friday After Five. So about 20 weeks, we've got live entertainment in multiple locations. So every Friday night, live music with Friday After Five, and then every Saturday night, we've got live music as well. And then again, I referenced the convention, the Visitors Bureau and the kind of partnership with their group, Dave and Mark over there. They've been working on for quite some time, this geocaching event. And so this is a national-level event of geocachers called Woodstock, and that'll be in town that Memorial Day weekend, where they've got multiple days of geocachers that'll be in town, doing some activities at the convention center, as well as park spaces around the community. And then they've got a large day that's planned on Saturday, the 27th there in McConnell Plaza. So a lot of visitors in town with that geocaching event that weekend.
Can you explain a little bit more what geocaching is?
Yeah, it's.
Unless you did and I didn't hear it.
No, I did not. It's, I'm certainly not an expert in it, but essentially, it is using GPS locations to go hunt for different objects or locations where things have been hidden around the community.
21st century scavenger hunt.
That's a simple version of it. Yes, sir.
That's what I was trying to get in my head.
Yep, so it happens all over the country, they do it all the time, and this is one of the national-level events. This has been in Cincinnati, last year, this event was in Vancouver. And Mark, like I said, and his team had worked with those folks, and so they were excited to be able to bring it to Owensboro compared to some of those other, you know, major cities around North America that have hosted it. So there'll be quite a few folks in town that Memorial Weekend. I think Convention Center's got a basketball tournament that same weekend, so it'll be a busy holiday weekend downtown. And then something that was mentioned at, I believe it was a Rooster Booster not too long ago, is this Kentucky Motorsports Week. My office has been meeting regularly with the CVB and Ben Skiatis and the Hayden family and several to try to honor slash recognize slash highlight the motorsports history that's here in Owensboro. And as they were looking at concepts for it, it just naturally fell into place right at early June because there are several events that are all taking place that involve motorsports. And so the dates there, June 10th through, June 2nd through June 10th, there's eight, I think there's actually 10 or 11 different events that they've got planned over that timeframe. Their River City Bike Expo is a big motorcycle expo at the convention center that opening weekend for a couple of days. Then we've got the Downtown Cruisin' that happens once a month on June 3rd, June 4th on Sunday, they're calling NASCAR Day. So Michael Waltrip, Darryl Waltrip, the Green family will all be in town there on Second Street for some meet and greet opportunities, NASCAR displays, things like that for the NASCAR fans. Later that night, they've got some dirt track racing out at Wendy Hollow, Appleby's Bike Night, middle of the week. I know Wendy Hollow's got another event happening later that week. And then the end of that week, on June 9th, is Nikki Hayden Day. They have hosted a Nikki Hayden Memorial Ride. That cyclist committed to town, I think they had about 150 motorcyclists last year, and obviously, they anticipate that number being a little bit bigger this time. I know, Mayor, you're going to do a proclamation again on June 9th for that event. Obviously, Nikki holds a special place in the community here, and the family loves being able to have that memorial ride with all those cyclists that night. So at 6:09 on the 9th, we'll be there by the memorial to record, actually, it'll be, because it's Friday night, so it'll be probably at the stage as part of that sunset toast. But you'll be a part of that with that proclamation that night, I know. So that's Kentucky Motorsports Week. And then just a few weeks after that, All-American 4th of July, we just recently announced, we always do ours traditionally on the holiday itself, so this year, it's Tuesday, July the 4th. And thank you to Meyer and Jerry Ray Davis being a part of our sponsors for that event to make this happen. We've still got, going to have four locations throughout the community that will shoot fireworks off simultaneously. The only thing to note of change compared to the last few years, we'll still have the big party down here along the riverfront and fireworks out in the river. And then Moreland Park would be a location, the old GE plant now called Owensboro Warehouse leasing will be a location, but the one at Shifely Park will not happen. That's going to shift down to the old Texas Gas area there by Jerry Ray Davis because Shifely Park's going to have some construction, things going on, and Jerry Ray Davis is a partner of ours this year, and so that location works great for it, right in the middle of those neighborhoods, on kind of towards the south side of the downtown, of the area there. So four locations, again, thank you to Meyer and Jerry Ray Davis. So those are just the highlights of a handful of things coming up over the next 90 days. But we've got another exciting announcement tomorrow with a new event, so watch for the media tomorrow morning for that, that we've got an announcement that'll be pretty exciting for a new event coming up next month. And then I'll just mention real quick, we've got another thing we're doing later this week with the airshow and a bunch of students that'll be coming out to get a great STEM event that'll be part of hoping, hopefully helping connect students with the airshow later this week. So that'll be in the media as well this week. So a lot of things going on.
Good deal.
That's it. Happy to answer any questions if you have.
Anybody?
I've got one, real quick one.
Sure.
On the non, apparently, so my understanding is nonprofits are not allowed to have booths unless they're barbecue-related.
For the barbecue? Yes.
There are several, well, I mean, if there's someplace else to put them. So, you know, example, the Lions Club is at a baseball pitch booth there for 25 years. I don't think they've been a disruption. They're banned, is that my understanding or?
Yeah, the Lions Club actually has not been there for the last three years. So they, what they're doing with this barbecue focus started back when COVID started, which was, I guess, we've done it about three times now since then. So they have not had any nonprofits. And there used to be a lot of nonprofits in addition to multiple carnival foods slash cellular phone companies slash, you know, leaf companies, lawn companies, it was just a street fair. And so that group decided, no, we want to get back to just focus solely on barbecue. So all the vendors that are down there are strictly barbecue or bourbon-related vendors.
Okay, so the follow-up would be, if a group sold barbecue-themed t-shirts, would they fit the mold or?
No, sir. Barbecue t-shirts wouldn't be allowed because the barbecue festival sells shirts.
Because they sell their own.
Correct.
Okay, all right. All right, is there a criteria on our website that describes?
It is barbecueinbarrels.com.
Okay, all right.
And I've already answered that group as well and talked to them and gave them the explanation, several weeks ago, I think it was.
It sounds like a great event, but my question is, couldn't we get two events out of it? That's my only concern is, you know, you get a re-bourbon festival too, separate from the barbecue. I don't know that that would work, but it sounds like there's enough enthusiasm to do both.
Yeah, potentially. One of the things that the bourbon group wanted is that, what makes it unique is the fact that they're doing barbecue and bourbon, because the bourbon folks like to do that. And they've tried it in some different markets, and most of the other markets, if you go to Bardstown, it's exclusively a bourbon event. And that industry thought it would be unique to draw visitors to our community to pair it with the barbecue. So that's why they did it. And honestly, we've got more vendors that are, we're going to kind of spill over Second Street and have to start taking up more space based on what we've already got this year. based on what we've already got this year. So, um, it's a good problem to have, but, again, the focus is strictly barbecue and bourbon stuff.
Yeah, 'cause when we met, we went barbecue, bourbon, and bluegrass. So, there may be something yet to be announced, uh, in the bluegrass scenario to go along with the three Bs.
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, do you have a special guest here?
I do. Uh, uh, I actually invite, invited, tried to invite Stacy, but I flubbed the invite. It's my fault that, that she wasn't here.
That's not, we, we, that's okay. We're glad she's here.
But I am glad that she's here. Uh, I'll say whenever, uh, we went to, uh, when we were prepared to seek out partners, partner found us, it was just serendipitous, uh, she spoke to us and the county chief, and, uh, so, anyway, I'll, I'll let her introduce herself and, uh, uh, just, you know, wanna just kind of thank her in front of everybody, like, she, the money was raised because of her. Like I said, it wasn't, uh, it wasn't tax-funded from the, the fire budget or anything. She raised the money, so, just wanna recognize her, give her, give her a chance to say hi to everybody, so, Stacy.
Hi, I'm Stacy Davis. I'm the Executive Director for the Right to Life of Owensboro. Um, so, yes, this vision came to me about a year ago, learned about what a Safe Haven Baby Box was, um, thought what a great resource that would be for our community. It kind of aligned with our nonprofit, um, of, of helping women and children, and so, um, brought it to the board, and here we are now, about a year and a half out. Um, I did, I contacted, um, both the county and city fire chiefs, sat down with them, was like, "Hey, this sounds kind of crazy, but can we just, like, knock out the side of one of your buildings and put this Safe Haven Baby Box in?" Uh, it was really awesome, because, um, Chief Howard was like, you know, "We had kind of had this on our radar already, um, so we would love to do this." And so, it really was one of those things that just fell into place exactly, um, in the right timing. So, um, now, we fundraised, um, all the money that we needed, and it's ordered, and so, hopefully, um, this summer, um, they said four or five weeks, right? So, four or five weeks, um, is what they told Chief, so, um, then we'll have a, a big ceremony for our community to have this resource for, for women and babies, so.
Sounds like divine intervention to me.
It really was. It really was. Um, I definitely believe in a higher power, and so, I really think that the Lord's hand was over this, and, uh, it was definitely a God wink whenever it all came together. You just knew, "All right, this is supposed to happen," so, I'm really excited.
God bless. Thank you so much for helping.
Yeah, thank you, guys, and I hope that you all come. We'll make sure that, um, we let everyone know.
Tell somebody besides the chief, so we'll get the message ready.
I will, I will. I'll make sure that, um, we, we invite the community and, and news and, and that sort of thing, 'cause we want to make sure that everyone knows that this is readily available. Um, you know, we hope that, it's one of those things that you're like, "Gosh, I hope it's never having to be used," that a woman has to have that amount of courage to surrender